Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on July 18th, 2017. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we turn to Councilmember Kathy Hikes.
Let us pray. Oh God, in the midst of this busy life, you give us times of refreshment and peace. Grant that we may so use our vacations and leisure times to rebuild our bodies and renew our minds, that our spirits may be open to the goodness of your creation. Send down upon us who hold office in the city the spirit of wisdom, of charity, and of justice, that with steadfast purpose we may faithfully serve in our office to promote the well-being of all people. Teach our citizens to rely on your strength and to accept their responsibilities to their fellow citizens. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Amen.
We've packed house tonight and a number of recognitions. We're going to start with, we have a number of Scouts from Troop 19. I have Brayden and Graham here tonight. If you all could stand. As I understand, Brayden and Graham are working on Communications, Mayor Page?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. We're glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
We also have Cub Scouts from Pack 19. If you all could stand. And you all are working on leadership in the community, or leadership in communications, right? Excellent. Excellent. We're glad to have you here. Thank you. We also have recognitions for the 2017 North Carolina High School Athletic Association. At this time, council recognizes Q Tucker and John Walton. Welcome.
Thank you very much to the council and Honorable Mayor. It is with a great deal of pride and pleasure that I am here this evening to make this presentation. I am the Commissioner of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. I'm in my 27th year. And in my time at the High School Athletic Association, we depend on very special people to help us conduct our state championships. And one of your fine constituents here in this, in this area has done just that for at least probably 25 of, I know, 25 years. And so this past May, it was with a great deal of pride that we joined with the National High School Federation, which is our parent organization based in Indianapolis, to be able to present to someone for their outstanding service to our organization for helping us present our championships. And for the past 25 years, John Walton has helped host our state tennis championships at the Burlington Tennis Center. And he's seen many fine tennis players come and go representing our state, and certainly you all ought to be proud of what he's done. And so it was with pride back in May when we presented that to him, and it is with even more pride that I am pleased to present this 2017 State Award for Outstanding Service in partnership with the National Federation of State High School Association in recognition of service and contributions in support of the NCHSA and the sport of tennis. I present this to John B. Walton.
Thank you. Q and me go back a long way. She, she's a young mentor to me. Young, I say young, Q. But she, she has moved up and she's just done a great job with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And two things that I always get, got from Q is, one, it's hard work, and the other is she always puts youth first when she's making her decisions, the good things that happen. And Q, I want to thank you and your staff, Karen and Trey, for all you all have done. We've hosted about 80 to 90 of the tournaments of the High School Athletic Association, and they're a fun group to work with. The bad word that Q and me talk about is rain, and that's not, not good, but thank you. And I want to thank Lisa's here, Lisa, my, my boss, and Harold, and Harold Owens, I know, I think Harold's here, and Tony's over here for all their support. They've always given me the tools needed to, to run tournaments. I think we've had 400 tournaments overall, or a little bit more, and they've always done great with that. And thank you guys for budgeting us to be able to do what we do as well. And I do want to thank my wife Susan and Matthews here. They played all the way through high school, and they've, they've had to kind of sacrifice, probably 300 weekends of that, maybe. But anyway, thanks again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Each year, we get to recognize Eagle Scouts in our community, and tonight, call on Tom Steele.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us back again this year. We certainly appreciate the support the city and the council and staff give to scouting in our community. I know there's a number of Eagle Scouts in this room, including the mayor, and myself, and I, I think I see one over here, Mr. Moffett. So there, there's a few more. I think Mr. Butler is one as well, so, and I know that there's many of you here who may not have been Scouts but have supported scouting. I know Mr. Ward has bought a lot of popcorn from my sons over here. So we thank you for that. It's a privilege to, to be here as the Chair of the local Alamance District Eagle Board. You all that are Eagle Scouts know this, but those of you who aren't may not realize, but only a very small percentage of our Boy Scouts actually earn the rank of Eagle, which is scouting's highest rank. And that, I've heard different numbers, but I've heard mostly between 2 and 4 percent. So it's, it's a pretty small number when you think of the total number of Scouts that, that make it all the way through the ranks. So it's, it's scouting's highest honor. It requires 11, they may have changed it now to 12, at least 21 merit badges, 11 to 12 of which are specified, others of which are electives. There's a number of skills that are taught. Many Scouts find their chosen profession through earning their merit badges in one, one course or another. And many Scouts will save the life of another person or their own life because of skills that they've learned as Scouts. So it's, it's an important organization, and we thank you as part of our community for supporting scouting in Burlington. I have been asked to help you all to recognize the Eagle Scouts that are here tonight, and I believe there's 14 of those, unless I've heard otherwise. So, so what I'd like to do, if it's, as I understand it, we're going to invite them up one by one, those that are here, and then I'll read the names of those who could not attend, but, but also have earned the rank of Eagle this year. Yes, sir.
Are we allowed to take pictures?
Mayor?
Definitely, definitely. And I think we're going to invite council to step in front of the, the bench.
He'll come down here. Great.
All right, he's not here. Okay. All right. Okay. Hello? Ta-da. Hey, how are you? Good. Flat feet. Okay, folks. First, I'd like to recognize William Reed Allen, who is a member of Troop 64 at Friendship United Methodist Church, and his project was a mud pipe table for the Children's Museum of Alamance County. It was a, was a new project for our Eagle Board. We hadn't had that before. The next Eagle is Reed Dunn Allshouse, who is a member of Troop 65 at Saxbaha United Methodist Church, and he cleared debris and created a walking area with benches and picnic tables for Bethel United Methodist Church. Then we have Robert Aaron Burke, who is a member of Troop 19 at Shiloh Presbyterian Church, and he constructed helmet, cubbies, and baseball racks for Meven Arts and Community Centers for baseball fields. Next is Alexander Guy Brookes, who is a member of Troop 51, which is sponsored by the Exchange Club at Edon Community Church, and he constructed an outdoor educational area for the Durham Pistol and Rifle Club. The next Eagle that's here is Zachary Thomas Eames, who is also a member of Troop 51, and he built benches for Blakie Hall Assisted Living. Then we have Sean Ross Maynard Franklin, who is a member of Troop 19 at Shiloh Presbyterian. His project was a meditation trail for the Unitarian Universalist Congregation. Next is Caleb Alexander Hicks of Troop 43 at Meven Presbyterian Church, and he built nuthatch nests for Meven Recreation and Parks Department. Apparently, nuthatches are endangered birds, and I didn't know that. Devin Allen Key, a member of Troop 39 at Macedonia Lutheran, built compost box for South Graham Elementary School. Then John Allen London of Troop 47 at Meven United Methodist Church built trail kiosks and directional trail signs for Paul's Forever. Then we have Robert Dudley McQueen, a member of Troop 17 at First Presbyterian Church, and he built little free libraries for the Church of the Holy Comforter. Next is Jonah David Moss, a member of Troop 64 at Friendship United Methodist Church, and for his project was a horse for Cedar Rock Park. Then we have last, I think of those who are here, Harrison Fitzgerald Knoth, a member of Troop 65 at Saxbaha United Methodist Church, who refurbished the bleachers at Eli Whitney Ball Field for safety. The other Eagles that we'd like to recognize for this past year are Joseph Parker Anderson of Troop 47, Caden Thomas Austin, also of Troop 47, Eric Thomas Byrd of Troop 39, Cody Robert Clark of Troop 142, John Stephen Koval of Troop 17, Seth Dorneth Cook of Troop 142, Hunter Lloyd Craftrey of Troop 65, Dylan Curtis Easter of Troop 17, Eli Whitman Fitzgerald of Troop 19, Declan Malone Ford of Troop 17, John Joseph Gailey of Troop 39, Jacob Holt Halacheff of Troop 51, Joseph Basile Halacheff of Troop 51, Quentin Thomas Hall of Troop 142, Nolan Jonathan Eisen of Troop 82, Aaron Gabriel Jones of Troop 11, Jared Davis Pierce of Troop 43, Jacob Alexander Perkins of Troop 19, Jacob Spence Perry of Troop 39, William Hunter Porterfield of Troop 142, Alexander Rankin of Troop 39, James Matthew Steffen of Troop 19, Jacob Eugene Stewart of Troop 17, Noah Andrew Tyre of Troop 43, and lastly, Ryan Michael Williams of Troop 47. Congratulations to all of you.
We can have you all up here. How's it going? How's it going? Come on, baby. Just get on me. Really, just get on me. Just sit down. Come on, baby. I'm such a good boy. Want me to sit this way?
Okay, I can see everybody. I'll take a couple. That's a trouble. Yeah, that's cute. I got it.
Is everyone good?
Yeah. I'm sure he's great.
Thank you all. So, all right. All right, everyone, we'll move on with our agenda. At this time, City Council recognizes City Clerk Renee Ward.
Members of council, it's our responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts and ventures in matters that are before us. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts pertaining to my decision to adopt these.
No. Before council, our minutes from June 5th, 2017 City Council Work Session, and the June 20th, 2017 City Council Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve these minutes?
Don't move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? The minutes have been approved before council is the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Agenda has been adopted. Next items are the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving a traffic commission recommendation to convert two all-day parking spaces in Municipal Lot 1 to electric vehicle charging-only spaces. Item B, to make the following appointments to the advisory boards and commissions for the 2017-2018 year, details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item C, Budget Amendment 2018-1, 2016 to 2017, projects carried forward, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item D, Budget Amendment 2018-2, Police and Fire Radio System Capital Purchases, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Item E, Budget Amendment 2018-3, Fire Truck, details of which are spelled out in your agenda. And item F, Budget Amendment 2018-5, Replacement Firewall Software, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. Do I hear a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as it is. Sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Consent agenda has been approved. We have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from B2 General Business District to CB, Conditional Business District, for the use of a climate-controlled self-storage facility for property located on the south side of I-4085 and University Drive, and north of Bonner Bridge Parkway and Danbrook Road. References Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers 106-954 and 173-394. At this time, council recognizes Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This rezoning request has the recommendation of staff, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the request to council by a vote of four to one. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and it is consistent with both the comprehensive land use plan and the Western Loop overlay. As you know, this project will be within that corridor with the Western overlay. The reason for the rezoning to be conditional at this location is due to the request for the two signs that will be on the building that are larger than would meet the requirements. However, if you look at the way it is worded in the application, as well as in the, our zoning ordinance, it meets the requirements of having the 10 percent, or be less than 10 percent of the wall area for each side, and it is closer to around 2 percent of the wall area. So in our estimation, it fell within those guidelines. The signs that they're requesting may seem a little large, but it is in keeping with the signs that's already in that area. The corridor didn't turn out the way that we had originally planned. In my personal opinion, I don't think it was done quite right in, in the first place, looking at growth patterns. Growth patterns change over time, so that's, that's easier for me to say for, you know, 2020 hindsight kind of thing, and I wasn't here to participate, so. I don't want to slam what anybody else did, but to have a corridor like this that connects up not only with Burlington but shoots right into Elon, the way the university's growing, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to have so much residential along the corridor, in my opinion. It's obviously turned into a commercial corridor, and I don't think, staff doesn't think that this request is out of line. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but Mr. Ryan Moffett is here to speak to this request.
I understand that it's just the signs that are attached to the wall. There are, there's no freestanding signs.
And they will be, they'll be lit, but it'll be very modestly lit.
Any other questions from council? Welcome, Ms. Moffett.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Ms. Nelson. As Ms. Nelson stated, my name's Ryan Moffett. I practice law with the Vernon Law Firm, located at 522 South Church Street here in Burlington. I'm very pleased to be here this evening, representing Greensboro-based developer CIP Construction Company, and the current property owner of the parcels in question, Crown Burlington LLC, in this bid to rezone parcel numbers 106-954 and 173-394, from their existing B2 general business zoning to conditional business for the development of a BeSafe self-storage and wine storage facility. Ian Phillips of CIP Construction is, is here this evening and is available to answer any questions that you may have for him. And to that point, please feel free to interrupt me at, at your election if you have any questions, and I will try my best to answer those, and Ian will as well. BeSafe is in the business of developing high-end storage facilities with specialized capabilities for wine storage. The BeSafe brand has, has set itself apart from the rest of the self-storage industry by offering state-of-the-art facilities in convenient and familiar locations. By prioritizing design and aesthetics and investing in the use of quality building products, the BeSafe facility avails itself to locations that are off limits, typically to traditional self-storage facilities. It is a business use, but has the appearance and character of an upscale office or institutional facility. This approach has been met with great demand, such demand that in the last three years, BeSafe has grown to have four locations operational, with eight locations currently under construction, and 30 more in the planning stages for across the southeastern United States. The plan that CIP presents for approval this evening is a concept site plan of the proposed footprint of the facility, which we've supplemented with proposed elevations and signage. This plan has been thoroughly vetted and has been through two technical review committee reviews now, and, and has been subject to tweaks and adjustments along the way, which has arrived at the proposal before you tonight. The proposed facility will have between 500 and 600 storage units, varying in size from 50 to 300 square feet, all climate-controlled, with drive-through access, as well as just, you know, convince, conventional foot and foot access. Hours of operation will be between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. in the evening, with two to three employees on duty at all times during those hours. The facility will be secured by keypad entry and video surveillance, and will be entirely inaccessible outside of those stated hours of operation. The property will contain a stormwater management pond to manage all impervious surface runoff in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. As on, as reflected on the site plan, curb and gutter will be installed along the property's street frontage, along Danbrook Road, and then a five-foot concrete sidewalk will be installed, starting at the end of the exit ramp from Interstate 4085 down University Drive, and continuing down Bonner Bridge to the mouth of Danbrook Road on Bonner Bridge Road. Beyond that, the development will conform to the specifications prescribed by the City of Burlington Code of Ordinances for B2 general business uses and the Western Loop Overlay District ordinances, except as Ms. Nelson noted, for the signage. CIP will be submitting a detailed site plan and landscape plan for TRC review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits. And as Ms. Nelson stated, the signage plan does include two 200-square-foot wall signs, each to be facing the University Drive side of the building and the Interstate 4085 side of the building. There will be no additional signage to the development other than, than those two signs. As Ms. Nelson has stated, and as you know, the comprehensive land use plan for this area and these parcels in particular calls for regional commercial use, which is described and include offices, retailers, food services, lodging, and entertainment, and are characterized by high visibility, high traffic counts, and convenient access, and prescribed for cohesive architectural styles, high-quality materials, and high-quality landscaping. As you can see from the concept plans and the renderings, the proposed use fits the mold without the expected traffic volume that you would see with a, with a typical B2 use. Storage facilities are known to be one of the lowest-impact uses from a traffic perspective. BeSafe, as I've stated, is by definition and in practice a business use, but in character aligns more with a low-impact office institutional use. And we know from experience with other developments in, in the immediate area...
The plan that CIP presents for approval this evening is a concept site plan of the proposed footprint of the facility, which we've supplemented with proposed elevations and signage. This plan has been thoroughly vetted and has been through two technical review committee reviews now, and has been subject to tweaks and adjustments along the way, which has arrived at the proposal before you tonight. The proposed facility will have between 500 and 600 storage units, varying in size from 50 to 300 square feet, all climate-controlled with drive-through access as well as just, you know, conventional foot and foot access. Hours of operation will be between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. in the evening, with two to three employees on duty at all times during those hours. The facility will be secured by keypad entry and video surveillance and will be entirely inaccessible outside of those stated hours of operation. The property will contain a stormwater management pond to manage all impervious surface runoff in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. As reflected on the site plan, curb and gutter will be installed along the property's street frontage, along Danbrook Road, and then a five-foot concrete sidewalk will be installed, starting at the end of the exit ramp from Interstate 4085 down University Drive and continuing down Bonner Bridge to the mouth of Danbrook Road on Bonner Bridge Road. Beyond that, the development will conform to the specifications prescribed by the City of Burlington Code of Ordinances for B2 general business uses and the Western Loop Overlay District ordinances, except, as Ms. Nelson noted, for the signage. CIP will be submitting a detailed site plan and landscape plan for TRC review and approval prior to the issuance of any building permits. And as Ms. Nelson stated, the signage plan does include two 200-square-foot wall signs, each to be facing the University Drive side of the building and the Interstate 4085 side of the building. There will be no additional signage to the development other than those two signs. As Ms. Nelson has stated, and as you know, the comprehensive land use plan for this area and these parcels in particular calls for regional commercial use, which is described and include offices, retailers, food services, lodging, and entertainment, and are characterized by high visibility, high traffic counts, and convenient access, and prescribed for cohesive architectural styles, high-quality materials, and high-quality landscaping. As you can see from the concept plans and the renderings, the proposed use fits the mold without the expected traffic volume that you would see with a typical B2 use. Storage facilities are known to be one of the lowest-impact uses from a traffic perspective. B-Safe, as I've stated, is by definition and in practice a business use, but in character aligns more with a low-impact office institutional use. And we know from experience with other developments in the immediate area that neighboring landowners are, have been traditionally opposed to development in this area that would promote increased traffic count or attract transient parties that most other general business uses would. It's also a possibility that the current B2 zoning could easily make that a reality. And also, as with past developments in the area, we have reached out to neighboring residents, particularly the McIntosh Neighborhood Association, to introduce the proposal, to explain the diminished impact of the proposal compared to what the parcel is currently zoned for, and obviously to solicit feedback. To date, we have not received any feedback from either the Neighborhood Association, individual residents, neighboring landowners, nor has CIP, to my knowledge. I believe staff, Joey Lee, may have fielded a few calls, inquiring about that, but we have not had any negative feedback on the matter to date. All that being said, I could continue down the list of reasons why we feel strongly that this proposal merits approval, but I think the concept plan before you speaks for itself, as does the track record of B-Safe storage in the last three years of materializing carefully-planned-out operations that exhibit deference to their surroundings and that I think would reflect Burlington in a positive light. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. As I said, Ian's available to answer questions as well. I appreciate your consideration of this request.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
The only ingress is on Danbrook, is that correct?
That's right.
Any other questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Remove.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. All those opposed, public hearing is closed. Any questions from council regarding the proposals put forth? Do I hear a motion?
Based on staff's recommendation, P&amp;Z, and the TRC review of this, and conforming to the land use plan in existence, I'd make the motion that we approve the rezoning request.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion as put forth? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. All those opposed, motion is approved.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time.
I'd like to make the motion for a statement of consistency. Yeah, I'd make the motion that we approve this statement of consistency, whereas city council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with the existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, statement of consistency has been approved. This moves us to public hearing number two. A public hearing has been set to consider adopting a resolution to approve a 10-year mahogany parking lease between the City of Burlington and Clacken Properties LLC for 30 parking spaces in municipal lot number eight. At this time, council recognizes Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Good to see you all again. I'm here representing the city in behalf of this request, and I actually have spoken to the developer and have remained in constant contact with Mr. Herb Coleman of Clacken Properties, and he has asked me to request a delay in the council hearing this item. The delay of this action is until Clacken Properties is able to be fully engaged with the bank for their construction loan, so they can better understand the number of spaces that are required upon the final construction and design, and to fully determine the total project costs and what all will be entailed with entering this long-term agreement. The developer has been very thankful to the city and to council for making this request available to him and working on the parking agreement as it's been put before you. This delay is not any sign of panic on the project. Although Mr. Coleman was not able to be here tonight, he has closed on the mahogany property and is the owner of it. He has directed his partners to secure the property and maintain it until such time as construction begins, and he is in the process of finalizing those historic property renovation plans and securing that construction loan. So, he has asked for this delay in action so that he can further tie up that construction loan commitment, and made that request of me on his behalf. And I can certainly answer any questions that the public or council may have regarding this public hearing, but we will need to rehear this at a later date as we move forward.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
They're just asking to continue.
Well, not necessarily. I mean, that's really a decision for council to make.
You want the public hearing continued, obviously, but to a time certain, or, I mean, since this is a public hearing, I think we need to go to a time certain. Even if it comes up again, they're not ready, we can delay the public hearing again, because, but this is a public hearing.
That's correct.
And it may very well be somebody here that would like to speak about it.
Absolutely.
And it may very well be some developments, once, you know, everything is together, that need to be heard at a public hearing. So, having said that, I don't think we can close the public hearing, but on the other hand, being a public hearing, it probably ought to be continued or delayed until a time certain, so you have a recommendation.
Well, the developer has stated he expects to close on his construction loan in late this year or early 2018, so it could be some number of days. He did not provide a date certain to me to use, but did reference the close of fourth quarter or early first quarter 2018 would be when he expects to have that all tied together.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I'd like to, you know, suggest that we, you know, continue to the first meeting in December and take a look at this project at the time. It may be we can continue at that point, but again, this has been a public hearing. It may be somebody that even would like to speak tonight and go on record, you know, at this point, so let me stop for that, because I think we need to take another look at it and probably by the end of the year, unless somebody else has some objection to that.
Any objections to that? Is anyone here trying to speak or would like to speak during this public hearing session? Thank you. Any other counsel?
Counselor, the applicant is aware-
I'll make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the first meeting in December, not December the 5th.
All those in favor of continuing to December 5th for the public hearing, please say aye. All those opposed, public hearing has been continued to the December 5th city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman.
We have a number of new business items this evening. Item three on our agenda, city council will consider a proposal from District Attorney Nadolsky for city funding of a federal drug, gun, and violent crimes prosecutor, and consider approving budget amendment 2018-6 for funding, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda. At this time, council recognizes City Manager Watkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll do a quick introduction and then yield the floor. Mr. Nadolsky is here this evening, as is Sheriff Terry Johnson, and I will do a quick overview and then let Mr. Nadolsky come forward and share a few more details with you. The city received a proposal back in March of this year from the district attorney's office requesting the city's financial assistance for the cost of a full-time dedicated prosecutor that will focus on federal drug, gun, and violent crimes. The projected cost to the city is $60,558, which represents 62.25% of the program's total cost. That number has arrived because of roughly 61% of the drug, gun, and violent crimes in the time period 2003 through 2016 were handled by Burlington Police Department of all those types of crimes within the county. And we have been talking back and forth since March, and I think the city's interest in this matter is to see convicted persons to receive a longer sentence and not be back in the community as quickly as persons that may be charged in the state court system. This grew out of the response to last summer, summer of '16's uptick in gun violence that we were seeing in the community, and everyone has stepped forward across the whole spectrum of ways that we can help solve and prevent those problems in the future, this being one of the ideas that has now germinated and is ready for action. Our police, as you all know, have seen many convicted persons complete their sentence and come right back into the community and commit the same types of crimes within a couple of years. And so you'll hear some details from Mr. Nadolsky about the idea of how that might have a longer timeframe. He'll share those details with you in a moment. Let me just give council a couple more details from our perspective. We do not believe the city, although we funded salaries for FY17 for our police department, I'm comfortable transferring this figure out of the police salary budget, if council so inclined, so we're not be increasing our budget at all, just be transferring money out of police salaries to help take care of this for this fiscal year. And staff would recommend the city participate and enter into an agreement, officially it would be an agreement with the North Carolina Administrative Office of the Courts. There'll be three joint funding partners as proposed. City of Graham has already taken action and approved this. Allamance County is projected to be a partner, as is the City of Meven, and we would all be sharing based on our percentage of the overall crimes. And at that point, Mr. Mayor, if I may, yield the floor to Mr. Nadolsky.
Welcome, District Attorney.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I truly appreciate being given the opportunity to speak to you about this proposal. This is something that I feel very strongly about, and I want to give you just a little bit of history about it. We actually had a grant, we had this position prior to this, for a couple of years, up till 2015. That was a grant provided by the Governor's Crime Commission. So when I talk to you about this grant, I speak from experience. This grant works. It works very well. Unfortunately, that grant funding did dry up, so we did not, we're not able to continue that position, and it was a big loss to all the municipalities, to the county and everybody. This position is about public safety, and I don't know that if you got these or not. I know that you were given a letter from Mr. Watkins, but we also have a proposal, and I have that prepared. If you would like that, I can hand that up. I don't know if you've already-
It's in the packages.
You've got that, okay. So if you've been able to read that, you can see our experiences with the prior grant and where we talk about the benefits of this program. And number one, it is about public safety. Unfortunately, the laws that we have currently set up, if someone is found with a firearm, it is typically a sentence of a year to two years, somewhere thereabouts. However, if they're taken up federally, that sentence goes up dramatically, and depending on their records, we can get 10, 15-year sentences. That is important, because the people that we're talking about, and this is not something that we are going to use, this program is not one that we're going to use indiscriminately, it is one we're going to focus on violent offenders, people that are problems in our communities, people that are continual problems in our communities and beyond rehabilitation, people that we want to get off the streets because they continue to victimize our community. And that's what the focus is, and so when you're looking at longer sentences, that means there's more time for them not to get out and reoffend against this community. And I'll give you an example. This is actually in our proposal. Clayton Paul, this is his record. This is a significant criminal record, I can tell you. It's over 100 pages long. Clayton Paul was involved in our system continually. You could not go to court and not see Clayton Paul, if it was driving while license revoked, drunk driving, beating up women over and over again. And the important aspect of that is it costs resources. Law enforcement had to investigate him over and over again. The district attorney's offices had to prosecute him over and over again. But when we had this grant, his luck ran out. We actually beat up his girlfriend, but we found him with a gun, and he was prosecuted at the federal level. He's now doing 10 years in federal prison, as well as three additional years at the state level, so that's 13 years that we don't have to mess with Clayton Paul. But for that federal prosecution, we would have been seeing him again and again and again. And that's the point of all this, is that it's public safety, but it's also efficiency for law enforcement departments. I can give you an example of Micah Cameron, who's currently charged with first-degree murder. Prior to him being charged with that and allegedly committing that offense, he was also charged with armed robbery at a gram, and three months passed, and then he committed this offense. So what I'm getting at is that if we can stop these habitual, significant, primary criminals, we can stop crime from happening, because we'll be getting them off the streets. And I use that example to say, there are going to be times, and there are going to be people that this net catches, that would commit significant crimes in the future. And if we can stop a murder from happening by putting someone in prison for a significant amount of time, that is going to be a vast savings in resources. When you look at a murder case, it takes thousands and thousands of hours on the part of law enforcement and the district attorney's office to prosecute, and that is going to be a significant savings. This is a collaborative effort. Public safety is not just one jurisdiction's problem, it's everybody's problem. And additionally, we are seeing crimes that will start in Graham and go over to Burlington and vice versa. You'll have cases where someone lives in Burlington, commits a crime in Graham. So, these criminals know no jurisdictions. It's not something where we should say, well, isn't that somebody else's problem or not our problem? It's all of our problems, and we all need to be observant of that and think about that. Chief Smythe is supportive of this program. He's unfortunately at a conference this week, but Assistant Chief Reddak is here. And I'll tell you, I brought everybody I could. I brought, Sheriff, raise your hand. Sheriff Terry Johnson's here. And I also brought Eric Watkins, who is a task force officer to the ATF. So when this, when this program was up and running before it was terminated, he was a big part of that, and so he was kind of the gatekeeper and a key person in looking at these cases. This is the thing. So back then, we had a prosecutor that was totally aimed at Allamance County and looking at cases. There wasn't a case that didn't come through the door that he didn't look at to see whether it could be federally prosecuted or not. And Eric Watkins was a big part of that, taking those cases up federally so that we could prosecute them. Now, we don't have that. We have an AUSA that is, Allamance County is part of their responsibilities, but it's with so many other counties that we're not even a priority. And I can tell you, the priority for the U.S. Attorney's Office is going to be Durham, Greensboro, and Winston-Salem, your big urban areas, and Allamance County unfortunately can get passed by. But by having this prosecutor, we're going to take personal ownership of that and do what we need to do to safeguard our communities. Eric Watkins can, Chief Reddak may want to say something, Mr. Watkins may want to say something, and I'd better say the sheriff. But I also want to answer any of your questions that you may have. There were some questions that were put forth that I've heard about numbers. It's really difficult to project numbers. This is a process that takes a little while to get going, because you got to get activated to the system, and it starts building, but once it gets rolling, there are a lot of cases that are going to come out of it. I can just tell you that it's hard to give a number, because we're going to be looking at the people that we need to get off the streets, and those people that are priorities, and those people that are violent offenders. And one question was, who would we get to take this position? Would it be inside our office or without? It's important to understand that this would be a collaborative effort with the Assistant, or with the U.S. Attorney's Office. It would be important that we would have to work with them, and so it would be somebody that both of us would like and be comfortable with in that position, so there would be some involvement by the U.S. Attorney's Office, because they'd also be working with them. So in all probability, it would not come within my office. I'm stretched thin. Every position that I have is important, and if I lost one person, it would cause significant problems with the running of my office, so it probably would come from outside. There was one question about who can be charged federally that I got. Typically, it's going to be firearm charges, but at one interesting note, what's different at the state level, or strike that, at the federal level, if we find somebody with bullets, we can charge them with a federal crime for that, and they can get significant sentences. You can't do that at the state level. So if we find somebody that just has the bullets and not the gun, we can't really do anything to them. Different at the federal level, and that's important, because when we find that, we can do something with them while, rather than just letting them go, when we know that they're a violent offender. Armed robberies qualified under the Hobbs Act has to be a certain, usually it's going to involve commercial. That's really not what this is about. Typically, if it's commercial robbery, the feds are going to take those cases. But what's interesting to note on that question is when you have, the way it is now, the feds are only going to take the very cherry on top of our crimes. But with a sworn prosecutor concentrated on Allamance County, it's going to open up vastly the cases that they will take, because that's- vastly the cases that they will take because that's all that they're going to be taking and concentrating on. So many, many more cases are going to be taken, and even cases that aren't the prototypical slam dunk case. There's certain things that go into federal sentencing. If there's guns or drugs together, then there's a mandatory five years at the end of their sentence they're already getting. Other enhancements, 10 years if they were discharging a gun while involved in a drug crime. And you can see, there's the career offender statute, which is where you get really big sentences, 15, 20, 25 years. You can read from the proposal that when we had the system in place, we were getting significant sentences against these criminal defendants, all or many of which are still in prison to this day and not out there recommitting. But unfortunately, there's others to fill their shoes, and we want to go after them. With that being said, I can answer your questions, or I can allow others to speak. I'm at your behest.
Are there any questions from counsel?
Just one. You said the previous grant expired in 2015. How long was it in place?
It takes, so unfortunately, it took a while to get, it was about three years that it was running, although it was funded for four, but there were some difficulties getting it to start. I just want to make sure that that's clear, that it does take a little bit of time because you have to have security clearances for the person that's doing it. But I want to get it up and running as quickly as possible.
And I think just for clarity, it's important because I know you've, this didn't just come up in March, you've worked on this for a couple of years. This is something that you've looked at since that grant expired, I know, and getting the others on board is important. So I know you guys have worked hard on that prior to today.
The day that that grant ended, I knew it was going to be a big loss for this county. And so even then, I was thinking about how it weighs to do that. And this is really what we've come up with, is looking at it, municipalities and the county coming together to fund this, and all of us working together because I think it is such a substantial need, but it also has such a substantial benefit.
I think, Pat, you said too, that if you had wanted somebody that charged with just bullets, they have to be a felon to be charged with just having the bullets and not gun?
Yes. It's similar to our firearm statute, but it's more expansive because at the state level, if they're just found with bullets, it's not a crime. But if they're found with bullets, they can be federally prosecuted.
I think too, the conversation that we had, something that's important to me and Sheriff Johnson and Assistant Chief Verdeck and you, is the issue that we have with all these homes being fired into by these criminals. And I think you answered my question on that, that we could charge these people federally with the discharging of firearm into a occupied dwelling or whatever that is. To me, it's important that these people really get into the system and locked up.
And I'll just stress again that this is not a haphazard program. This is where we are looking at career criminals, violent offenders, and people that need to be locked away and people that are beyond rehabilitation.
Yeah. Because I think Chief Verdeck knows I get my hat hung and go to work with him to help cull some of the crime that we have in our area. And thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yes, sir.
You want to let Sheriff Johnson speak?
Are there other questions from counsel?
Everybody wants to hear from us.
I do have a question for you. What's the expectation of this beyond this year?
It's a good question. So what we're going to want to do is, this is not just, I mean, we are going, so it is for a year, and we want to show results. And so when we got this okayed by Graham, they asked for quarterly results, quarterly reports, or how things are going. And we said, absolutely, we will give those to you. We want to show you that it works, and then we want to be back before you to obtain the additional funding for it to continue. And again, that's going to be based on statistics as far as what portion would be borne out by Burlington versus Meven versus Graham or versus the county. But I will stress that it is something that we would continue to want to get the funding because it's something that continues on, and it's something that you see benefit by having it. I'm going to tell you, and maybe Mr. Watkins can tell you this, but we will have criminals that get arrested, and the first thing out of their mouth is, I'm not being taken federally, am I? Because they know. I mean, if you're a career criminal, you've had experience, you know your way around the street, you know how the process works, and it scares the heck out of them. We want to be able to do more than just scare them. We want to follow through and put them away for those significant sentences.
Sheriff, we're done.
Let me just say this, you know, today, we're having groups, gang bangers, I call them frequent flyers criminals, that is coming from Greensboro, Durham, Hillsborough, into Alamance County. Why? Because a lot of the federal prosecutors are taking those big cases in the cities, and it's technically clogging their court system. And we're not able to do that many times because their court system is so full. If we have a prosecutor here, you can bet after the first two or three that is sent away for a long period of time, the word's going to get back to those cities, and they're not going to come here. And, you know, you're looking at the amount of money, and if we just, you know, take two off the street, you're going to pay for a year's salary because of the money that goes into the court system, the money that goes into the investigation of the Burlington and Alamance County Sheriff's Office. It's money well spent. And I'm going to stand with District Attorney Nadolsky on this issue and hope you will too.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion from counsel regarding this proposal?
I make a motion that we approve and approve the proposal and the budget amendment 2018, six, there's six for funding for this program. A second.
Any questions on the motion as put forth? All those in favor of approving the proposal and the budget amendment, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Sheriff.
Item four on our agenda, City Council will consider approving a program year 17, 2017, 2018, one-year action plans of the Community Development Program. At this time, counsel recognizes Community Development Administrator Sonja Randle.
I'm going to ask you out here is what was advertised in the newspaper. Got to make sure that if you all didn't be able to see the newspaper version, that you have it before you. So good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The Planning Department asks that City Council consider approving the program year 2017 through 2018, one-year action plans for the Community Development Program. The city must submit a council-approved CDBG one-year action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, sorry, which is also HUD, by August 16th of this year. As lead entity for the home consortium, the City of Greensboro will prepare and submit the one-year action plan for the home program. The Burlington City Council must approve submission of the city and county's proposed uses of the home program funds during fiscal year 2017, 18, for inclusion in the consortium's plan. So under 24 CFR 91.15, in no event will HUD accept a submission of any annual action plans later than August 16th of this year. And so if we do fail to submit the plan by August 16th of this year, we will forfeit all of the CDBG and home funding. So before you, what you see in your, actually in your packet, if you can look at your packet, you might want to look at your packet and compare that budget with the one that was advertised in the newspaper, because there was a little bit of a slight change there. So there was a revision last Thursday. The City of Greensboro updated the home figures, the home city figures and the home county figures. So that should be on the backside of that paper that I passed out. And then in the packet, you'll see actually that the numbers that they updated us with are actually, it's an increase. So on the city side, the city budget, the home city budget increased from $274,129 to $279,855, which is an increase of $5,726. For the home county budget, that one increased from $97,370 to $134,187, which is an increase of approximately $36,000. And so I did want to make that note to you all. And also, in your packet, you also saw the different programs that will be funded for this year for 2017, 2018. So it's the same programs that you saw before back in April with the addition of one program, which is an emergency repair program. Unfortunately, we did not receive the grant from the Housing Finance Agency for the upcoming fiscal year for the urgent repair program. But we wanted to make sure that the citizens of Burlington still had that funding available for emergency repair work here. So we did take in a little bit more of loan funds this year. We had some unexpected payoffs, and so we were able to use those unexpected payoffs to fund that emergency repair program. Okay? Do you all have any questions? On me?
Yeah, I just want to be clear with what I understand. You're calling the revenue estimated, but I thought that was the number, of the CDBG funds that you're getting.
So we, yeah, we always say estimated, but the CDBG numbers are correct. It is $399,942. That was our allocation for this fiscal year. And I said estimated in there because I knew that the home figures would change. Because at that time, when we had to advertise in the newspaper, the City of Greensboro had not received from HUD what the percentage breakdown would be. So we knew that that amount was going to change, so we always just say estimated to account for that. And so the only thing that's changed with that, with what was advertised, is on the back part, are the home figures, the home city and the home county. They've both increased. Okay?
We're only down about...
Oh, from last year?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. We're only down, I think, $2,069.
This is better than we expect.
Right. It's better than some other municipalities. So we weren't, we weren't really hit that hard, so.
Any other questions from counsel? Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the 2017-18 year action plan for the Community Development Program.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion put forth? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five on our agenda, City Council will consider approving a request to temporarily close a portion of Maple Avenue between Davis Street and Church Street during Cone Health Center of Alamance Regionals 5K fundraiser event on Saturday, October 28th, 2017, from 6:00 AM until 12:00 noon, conditional upon meeting requirements of the City of Burlington Special Events Application. This time, we recognize Jamie Troxler, event planner. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jamie Troxler, and I am one of the organizers for the second annual I Will Survive 5K. It will be held here in Burlington. And we are asking that you guys would consider the approval of a temporary street closing on Maple Avenue between Church Street and Davis Street. The purpose of this road closing will be to keep our area for our runners and participants for our start and finish line safe and secure during our event. And this is a fundraiser, and the proceeds will benefit the Cone Health Cancer Center Survivorship Fund that will actually help local cancer survivors. So Mayor, I hope that you will add us to your calendar again this year and participate in our race.
I enjoyed it last year.
Great.
Any questions from counsel regarding this event? Do I hear a motion?
Move that we approve the temporary street closing request, conditional upon meeting the requirements of the City of Burlington Special Event Permit Application.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion as put forth? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you, guys.
Item six on our agenda, City Council will consider approving the following temporary street closing request during United Way of Alamance County's fundraising concert, conditional upon meeting requirements in the City of Burlington Special Events Application. Details of that event are spelled out in your agenda. At this time, we recognize President of the United Way, Heidi Noel, and Community Outreach Coordinator, Kelly Holly.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Thank you for considering our application. As you know, it is a great coup to get the Fabulous Lumpsters to come to do a concert for anybody for their benefit. It is always a great fundraiser for us and a great community event where people, 1,000 people might come out and see the Fabulous Lumpsters perform their very unique concert. We were fortunate enough that we were approached this year with a specific date to come to downtown Burlington. That was their request. The Lumpsters have played elsewhere, but they were adamant that they wanted to be downtown this year. And thanks to Lisa Wolf and other city staff, Sam Epps and Jay Meven, and helped us with the application and considered all the different things that it would take to get the concert to be downtown, that's what's in our request tonight. And I want to thank Kelly because she really worked hard on getting that application and all the details together with Lisa and her staff. So we appreciate your consideration. The funds that will be raised at this fundraiser go to our community fund that support programs like our Supportive Link Transit, our voluntary income tax program, our 211, our Story Walks, and the funding that we give to many nonprofits throughout the county.
Any questions from counsel?
My only question is, is there a way for us to get that application digitally?
Rachel, I don't know if you want to allude to this, but we have access through the city's network, the CobbNet network, which is the City of Burlington network. I don't know, do they have access to CobbNet? I don't know if council members do or not. No? You don't know? We could certainly look into that. I don't know, that's a remote, I guess, dial-up into. The fault, the problem is, these files are so large that it's difficult, the systems won't send those out, or your system might not accept it. So we certainly can look into that, I think, with IT to see if there's a way that we can give you that access to that folder. That's basically, so all the city staff that are involved in the process of approval have access to that folder. And I usually send, once an application's submitted, I submit that through an email to all the staff so that they can go into that folder and review and comment back to me if there's any comments or suggestions. So we'll certainly look into that, be happy to.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the temporary street closing request, conditional upon meeting the requirements of our special event permit application.
Second. Any questions regarding the motion put forth? All those in favor of approving, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. We look forward to the event.
Thank you very much.
Next item on our agenda, City Council will consider adopting a resolution to award a contract to PNS Grading LLC in the amount of $274,499 for construction of intersection improvements on Forest Dale Drive at South Church Street, and consider approving budget amendment 2018-4, the details of which are spelled out in your agenda, for additional funding of the project. At this time, counsel recognizes Landy Root.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In 2012, city staff identified the intersection of Forest Dale Drive and South Church Street for improvements, primarily of a right turn lane onto South Church Street and an additional center turn lane along Forest Dale Drive. This prompted the city and North Carolina Department of Transportation to enter into a small, state small construction agreement in 2015. With this, the North Carolina Department of Transportation would reimburse the city up to $143,000 for the actual expenses of the design and construction of the project. On July 10th, the Engineering Department received three bids for these intersection improvements. The apparent low bidder is PNS Grading LLC of Greensboro, North Carolina, with a bid of $274,499. Based on current market conditions, this appears to be a reasonable price to perform this work, and is recommended that City Council award the contract to PNS Grading LLC pending concurrence by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from counsel?
Back up there on the corner, on Forest Dale.
It should help. It appears, right now, our counts show that we have four times the right turn movement compared to the through movement that we have currently situated there. So separating that right turn can help that tremendously.
Excellent. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion from counsel?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no public comments signed up for this evening. That moves us to City Council comments. A number of events coming up that we'd like to share and hope folks come out to celebrate. This weekend, we'll be over at North Park on Saturday, July 22nd, celebrating the implementation of the Phase One improvements over there, starting at 2:00. We'll have a number of events, including a pool party, basketball competitions, some free ice cream, music, and it'll go through into the evening. So we hope folks come out there and enjoy those wonderful improvements to the park. Next week, we'll be here in City Hall on Wednesday, July 26th, for Belong in Burlington from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It's a great... July 26th, for Belong in Burlington, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It's a great opportunity for new and existing residents to find ways to engage with the community and learn more about all the amazing things happening in Burlington. And Fourth Fridays is coming up, end of next week, July 28th, from 4:30 to 9:00 PM, downtown at the Historic Depot. Should be a wonderful event with food, music, and much more in downtown. Always exciting when it's Fourth Friday season. And National Night Out is coming up, August 1st. I know we have many, many block parties. Do you know how many parties we're having around?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, which is one of the highest rates per capita of National Night Out watches and block parties in the state, which is really incredible. So, I know council enjoys heading out and meeting neighbors all across the city. So, we look forward to folks celebrating National Night Out on August 1st. And if you have any questions about forming your own neighborhood watch or participating in National Night Out, you can contact the police department. Any other council comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and request to go into closed session.
Before that, can I recognize Manager Watkins briefly?
Sure.
So, we've got that, one item, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for calling. Mr. Kurtman has noted that in the previous item, item six, perhaps the motion was just to adopt the resolution. We also would request council to approve a budget amendment 2018-4, if you're so inclined.
On item six?
The $25,000.
$25,000, yes, sir. There were two pieces to that, if council would...
Okay.
I'll make that motion that we adopt the budget amendment 2018-4, $25,000 as written.
Second.
Okay. Any questions regarding the motion as put forth? All those in favor of approving the budget amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got one more walk-on item. Counsel, I think I sent an email last night, and you have a copy at your desk of a letter of support. The New Leaf Society has suggested, Ms. Janice Burgess, on behalf of New Leaf Society, suggested that I send a letter to Part F, which is the state agency that has the grant funds for capital projects and parks and recreation, telling, reminding them before they vote this summer that the council is, the city is in support of the $296,000 grant application that has been turned in for Willbrook Park improvements. Council discussed this most recently at the April 18th council meeting and approved the recreation master plan, a site-specific master plan. During that conversation, we made reference and talked about a grant application. I'm not certain, unfortunately, we got that recorded in the minutes. And so, before I send this letter, we'd just like council, perhaps, just to, if you're comfortable with a motion, to authorize sending this letter indicating the city's support of the, the application.
Do I hear a motion to authorize this?
Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor of the motion to authorize, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has been approved. Thank you, manager. Any other items?
That's all I have.
All right. Any other council comments?
I'd like to make a motion, request to go into closed session pursuant to NC General Statute 143, 318, 11A4, to discuss a potential economic development project pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to discuss a personnel issue at the same time.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to go into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, everyone. Council will reconvene following the closed session.
Oh, please, please. I'm excited.
I don't know what's so funny, but I'm not. I've been here for two and a half hours.
Make the motion, Anton.
Well, you guys have been, I don't know.
Do you hear a motion?
Yeah, we're gonna make you wait. This is us getting back at you.
Thomas.
Okay, I have a note here, not related to the closed session, correct? You have on your desk those notebooks or a copy of the draft revised code of ordinances. This is as promised in an April 28th MO to you by City Attorney David Huffman. In Mr. Huffman's absence tonight, Ms. Ginger Booker, the attorney-
Oh, please, please. I've been here for two and a half hours.
Make the motion, then, Tom.
Well, you guys have been on.
Do I hear a motion?
No, no, no.
Yeah, we're gonna make you wait. This is, this is us getting back at you.
Thomas.
Okay, I have a note here, not related to the closed session, correct? You have on your desk those notebooks or a copy of the draft revised code of ordinances. This is as promised in an April 28th memo to you by City Attorney David Huffman. In Mr. Huffman's absence tonight, Ms. Ginger Booker, the attorney who worked on the project, is here to accompany the delivery. There's a memo from Mr. Huffman on page one of the notebook. Please read this memo for an overview of the key points. At an upcoming meeting, we can set dates for work sessions to review the draft. The memo suggests rework sessions, which you can confirm or modify as you get into the process.
January 15th.
Sir?
Yes, what date?
Yes, sir.
January 15th, 2019.
You guys have one night to read that, memorize the revised report.
Not, not a problem.
Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry that we kept you here all this time.
Hearing no other questions, do I hear a motion?
To return to open session?
Yep. Didn't we technically need that before that he read that statement? So do I hear a motion to return to open session?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed, we're in open session, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I like it here.
All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you, open for company.